All right, it is 7:02 and I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And could we stand for the national anthem? The pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
You do that.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Do you want, can you see when people say, okay. All in favor? Yeah, okay. Unanimous. And do we have any public input and announcements? You're on later.
I have public input. You want me to give a public input?
Contributed to your...
Well, yeah, it's the same subject.
Then you're already on the agenda. We have you on later.
Oh, I'm gonna get to speak then.
Yep.
Oh, thank you, I didn't realize.
Do we, do we... Normally, we would let somebody speak during public comment, not, not later on in the agenda.
During that. About your three minutes now.
I think that...
Come on over.
I think that would be appropriate, but...
Okay. I just wanted to think about it.
I'd be more than willing to take questions or whatever. But this is all, it's all related, is this my mic?
Yeah, you can sit.
I can sit. Wow, I can hold these. Okay, good evening, I'm Ken Fredette from Wallingford. Thank you for the opportunity to speak once again tonight. And thank you for including my complaint against Bruce Morton for repeated unethical behavior on tonight's agenda. The fact that Mr. Morton has been able to make statements and take actions inappropriate for a school board member without retribution for so long stems from him sidestepping the law by providing invented facts when questioned, and then those asking said questions either shrugging and accepting the falsehoods as true, or saying that they didn't have the authority to take action. And I can elaborate with specific examples of this beyond what I submitted on January 4th if the board so desires. This board does in fact have the authority to take action, both under policy B3 by censuring him, and also under 24 VSA 961 by declaring his seat vacant as he no longer lives in the town he was elected to represent. If the latter happens tonight, there could, would still be time for people who actually reside in Wallingford to submit petitions to be elected in March. And if any of you think I'm doing this because I wanna get back on the board, it's like, just, that's nowhere near true. So, and by the way, that statute, the 24 VSA 961 was provided for me by the Secretary of State as a possible path to removing Mr. Morton or anyone from this or any board. And again, that came from the Secretary of State's office. Enough is enough. We shouldn't have to hire a lawyer for this, as Mr. Morton declared in his writing on March 25th, '22, that he had been living in Rutland since mid-October of '21. But the Wallingford Board of Civil Authority declined removing him from our checklist, due in part to lack of understanding of their role in this matter. And in their defense, I wasn't completely familiar with the entire law myself at the time, but, and the town clerk, we were all, it was new territory. But they didn't understand their role completely, and he also shared a plan with them to move back to Wallingford, which was fanciful at best. And now falls upon this board to do the right thing and let the burden of proof transfer from the citizens of Wallingford to Mr. Morton, should he choose to challenge any decision by this board tonight. Thank you.
Want a public comment, Cindy? Okay, just checking. And I think Pam, we had no other public comment.
I didn't have anything. Now, it is board discussion.
I guess I would say, I would suggest, recommend...
Say three things before you start.
We do have this on the agenda later, so my recommendation would be that we...
Okay, I thought you were gonna discuss it.
No, 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 no. My recommendation would be we let our Shrewsbury folks, because they're on the agenda first, and then since we do have this on the agenda, that we do all our board discussion then. Again, recommendation, suggestion, I'm not the chair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I need a approval of the minutes from 1:04. And I make a motion for approval. And do I have a second?
I'll second it for, I'll second it.
Do we have any discussion on the minutes?
Yeah, I do. Couple of things. When we did, when we voted on the budget, we did a roll call. And this is just a question, should that be public in terms of who voted what? I know we have in the past. In other words, it would say, you know, this person, yay.
Who voted yes, who voted no.
This person, nay.
I had a...
I know you did.
Yes.
I know you did.
I was gonna say...
But I just think every time we take a roll call vote, it's important that the public be able to see who voted for and who voted against things.
I would agree with that.
There's no purpose of doing a roll call unless you do that.
Exactly.
We can revise that.
Yep. No, that, and then, my only other was, never mind. Well, the... When was this meeting?
January 4th.
1:04.
Fourth of January.
I think the dates for the next policy meeting and the next community engagement should be 2:10, not 1:10.
Oh, I think, I think they were 1:10. I think they happened...
They were 1:10 this last...
Yeah, it says next meeting is scheduled for 1:10.
Yeah, the meeting was on the floor.
That was, that was the time, so at the time of this meeting, the next meeting...
Which was January 4th.
Next policy meeting was the 10th.
Oh, okay, okay. I told you, I thought I was confused.
Doesn't hurt to check.
And still you went on. And I was correct 100%. So I have nothing more to add.
So we'll work on, okay.
Sorry.
After that is adding in our roll call votes and stuff. Does anybody else have any other discussion on the minutes? Okay, can I have a vote? All in favor with the changes?
Abstain.
Abstain? Okay. Thank you. All right, our Shrewsbury update. Are you ready?
Well, thank you so much for coming on Up the Mountain and holding your school meeting up here. I should have brought my school. I'm very excited to be up here, and I just wanna introduce all my awesome educators that are here to talk about society and our careers, of course. So this is Ms. Erin Rice, who teaches grade two. This is Ms. Julia Bonifine, who teaches K1. This is Ms. Levens, who teaches third and fourth grade. Ms. McDonald, who teaches fitness sixth grade. And Ms. Cooter Marsh, who teaches special ed. So we've got kind of two teams that are gonna present for you tonight, and I'm just gonna let them take it away. Thank you for being able to share some of the work that we're doing here about the school today. I'm going to be starting out talking about some of the things I've been working on with my second graders. So everything that I speak about will be as it's relevant to the second year. So what we're talking about tonight is some of the work that we've been doing in literacy. And this year, our focus for our professional learning community, which is me twice a month as a staff, and we've been focusing on the work that has come from our district's LNIC group, which Julia will speak to in a little bit about that. We've been going over the essential instructional practices in early literacy. And so all of those practices are supported by research in that they can have a positive impact on literacy development. So we've been focusing on those four grades, pre-K through 3. And the essential that I chose to really focus on in my class was essential practice one, which is, I'll read it to you because it's really small up here, deliver research-informed efforts to foster literacy motivation and engagement within and across lessons. The teacher creates opportunities for children to see themselves as successful readers and writers. So at the very beginning of the year, working with the second graders, one of the things I noticed about their writing was that they were writing, which is developmentally appropriate, but really simple sentences, and I wanted them to use, learn their vocabulary words, more details and elaboration to clearly explain their ideas. And I really felt that this practice would help support that. So I'll kind of go over my plan with you next. So as a staff, everybody chose what they felt would be most helpful for their students and their growth, and so we all chose a change idea. So that's something that we wanted to implement to help our students achieve. So I wanted to provide students with feedback on what they're doing well in their writing and why they're doing that well. So I plan to meet with students at least weekly about their writing and identify one aspect of their writing that they're doing well and why. So I went ahead and did that, been doing that since we've been working on this. Examples I might say, you know, things I might say to them, for example, by using that adjective in your sentence that helped me understand what you meant, by giving me more detail about your topic and made your writing more interesting, things like that, which led students to kind of take more initiative when they're working independently on their writing, and kind of reflecting on their writing, and doing those things in a more natural way. I also felt like, which I hadn't really thought about this, but a lot of times in writing instruction, we do scaffolding with kids, so we do written models of what they're working on. And this was more of a verbal model, by doing this, I was supporting them in using that language, and then they would say to me, "Oh, Ms. Rice, look what I did. I used this and it made my sentence more interesting." So I noticed them taking some ownership themselves. And then kind of where I'm going from here, part of what students have to start doing in second grade is working with their peers and giving feedback about their writing and their work. So I would love for them to do this sort of model when they're working with their peers in terms of giving peers feedback, that then even as seven and eight-year-olds, they can go back and take that feedback and improve their skills. I have a couple of student samples. So these are all the same students, the, and these are three samples from that student. The first sample was from kind of an initial writing workshop time. It's a really simple sentence, "Once there was an astronaut, he was going to the moon." And that was it. And that was kind of, it took a while for that student to do that. With some more feedback and practice, the next time they were writing, "I got a new bike. It's purple. I wrote it in my driveway." So kind of elaborating on that idea. And then, a little further down the line, writing about a trip to Costa Rica that the student went on, and talking about the animals there, and he saw different animals because it's a warmer climate. So kind of seeing that progression of student growth was really helpful, and it made me realize that, you know, what we've been working on so hard is making a difference. And then I have another student sample, same idea, it's one student, and it's three writing pieces. This student did try at the beginning of the year to incorporate some details. At recess, we made a fort that was built with sticks and grass. So that was okay. The second one was over the weekend, they had a sleepover, talks about one thing they did, tried to wrap it up with like a little, "It was so fun." The first writing piece also had a little, at the end, "We are making it," so they're attempting a conclusion, but I still wanted the student to include more details. And in the last sample, talking about a fox and how pretty they are, and their pretty orange furs blowing in the wind. So just another example of that progression of elaborating more and doing more thorough writing. So that's kind of one thing that I've taken from the professional learning community work and incorporated into my classroom with fair success.
Hi, I'm Julia Bonifine, and I teach kindergarten in first grade. It's nice to see so many new faces on the board, and it's nice to be able to present to you about the work in my classroom rather than working with the board on contract negotiations when it was off to my role. So I'm really happy to be here. And I'd like to share with you about the work I've been doing in my classroom on teaching foundational skills through differentiated instruction. And by foundational skills, I mean things such as learning the letters of the alphabet, learning the sounds that the letters make, beginning to sound out words and decode them as they're reading. So what I'm doing is I'm teaching these skills in very small groups based on some very quick simple assessments that show me where students have gaps, and where they're struggling, and what they need. So again, as Erin referred, to the essential practices that we're working on in our professional learning community groups, this is an essential practice of explicit instruction in letter-sound relationships, and this is being supported by the Early Literacy Networked Improvement Community, which you might have heard a little bit about and referred to as the LNIC group. It's sponsored by the Vermont Agency of Education, and it's a national group, and I'm really happy to be a part of it and that our district is participating in it. So the first year that the LNIC group met, these were the two goals that they decided upon. So for kindergarten, it was by the end of kindergarten, all children are able to read and write any regular consonant-vowel consonant word. So that's words like hat, pit, things like that. And also write them in their journals in a personally meaningful text. And by the end of first grade, all learners will be proficient with reading words containing vowel teams. So a word like seat that has an ea in it is an example of a vowel team. And that they would demonstrate within word pattern spelling, which would be with vowel teams, on some basic common assessments that we use. And I heard about these goals the first year of the LNIC work, and I was not part of it. And I was a little bit in a panic. I thought these were extremely lofty goals and pretty unattainable for kindergarteners in first grade. I've been teaching for 30 years, and I was pretty comfortable with kindergartners learning the letters of the alphabet, most of them, and letter sounds. And I often heard from parents, "Well, my child's not really reading that book, they're just, they know the first sound and then they're guessing at the word." And maybe you've heard that before from, or thought that about kids that you know. So I saw within that first year, however, in the other classes, that kids were making progress based on the work that the LNIC group was doing. And so I became involved this year. So we're working this year in the LNIC group with Dr. Sharon Walpole, and she's a professor of education at the University of Delaware. And she wrote this book, How to Plan Differentiated Reading Instruction. And within the first meeting, I was convinced that those goals were important because she was talking about how these skills are really the ticket for children for a grade-level curriculum and how they can access that. And she also said, "If kids master these skills in the early years, think about what readers and writers and researchers they can be as they move through the elementary grades." So I was really convinced that I wanted to work on these. And so I began giving the assessments in this group and started some small group work. So what I want to come end with is where my children are with this work. So the green squares are where they started. And as they've gone through these short lessons, and they're short lessons, they're 10 minutes to 15 minutes a day, but they're daily, and some of the research shows that these short bursts of instruction are what really sticks with kids as long as it happens over and over again in a very systematic way. So the checkboxes are when they mastered the skills, and I know that through assessments that I've done. And the stars are where they are currently in small groups. And you can see that letter patterns is highlighted because that is the kindergarten goal for the end of the year. And vowel teams is highlighted because that is the first grade goal. So I feel like my kids are making substantial progress in these foundational skills. And what seems like lofty goals, well, I still think they're lofty. I feel that they're really achievable for both my kindergarten and first grade students. And it's really great to see them sounding out words and not just stopping at the first letter, and not saying things like, "Oh, well, I don't know that word yet," but seeing them have skills and strategies to apply. So I'm excited about the work this year with the LNIC.
For grades three to six, we focused on authentic audience, which we will explore. So we begin by, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but in the fall, the entire student body from kindergarten through 12 all respond to the same prompt. And we have it so that we can look at and analyze the student writing within our own classroom, but also as we meet with other teachers from the same classes or same grade bands, so that we can look for commonalities and other areas that we want to develop. And as we were analyzing, especially when we, when Colleen and I came back to look at this, we saw that there was, the one way that we could help our students best was to strengthen through elaboration. We saw that that would be a key way for them to become stronger writers. And also, we noticed that for some of our writers, it would be really important for them to increase their writing stamina, you know, to the amount of time that they would stick with a particular piece or go back and revise, so that they could have the best writing possible. So authentic audience is a way to make students' learning feel real and relevant, as well as make them into engaged independent authors. When a student is writing with a specific audience in mind, they can adjust their writing style and vocabulary as well as the content. Having an authentic audience motivates students to write in greater depth, revise to strengthen their ideas, and strive to publish their work. This can change their tone, writing style, and the vocabulary that they use. Authentic audience specifically for third and fourth grade, so I have eight, nine, and 10-year-olds in my class, are their peers. They always wanna tell their peers what they're doing and how to do the things that they do. So the students started by being given questions and topics relevant to their interests, and they are told to have a specific person or group of people in mind when they're responding in their writing. They were first introduced through writing informational and how-to pieces to explain to people how to do something that they are really good at. We started this around Halloween time, so the first how-to piece I had all the third and fourth graders write, was about how to carve a pumpkin, which was very, they used simplistic vocabulary to talk to someone that maybe has never done this before. And then to watch the progress that they've made in the next pieces, you can go ahead, of doing not only how-to, but expository writing, of explaining a story of exactly what happened first, then, next. So the third and fourth graders have been working on these pieces. They have started with simple four-step procedures and have now gone into full-page pieces, sorry, about their favorite game or activity. So it's hard to see up here, but the biggest thing that I have noticed as an improvement is students using richer vocabulary to describe specific activities and interests, and they're more motivated to write during times, during writing times as well as free times. These three pieces are all about Field Day, which was the most recent writing piece that the third and fourth graders did. I gave them the prompt to explain a game or activity that they would like to see on Field Day, and they were able to actually create their own authentic audience with this by inviting Ms. Simonetti into our room to read the ideas to her and hopefully convince her to use these activities on Field Day. So for some of the vocabulary we see, for flag football, he used words like offense and defense, which he probably wouldn't use in his normal writing. And then this game was a water game, so she's talking about drift, drift, drop, which is a different version of duck, duck, goose. I am excited to see how they grow next. So authentic audience within the fifth and sixth grade, still is looking for increased elaboration, but one of our major focuses is writing beyond the classroom and beyond just our school. And one of the ways we do that is through participation in Young Writers Project and Young Writers USA. Young Writers Project, if you're not familiar with it, is a Vermont-based website, which promotes creative work with the youth and pretty much predominantly middle to high school age. It allows them to have feedback from peers as well as writing instructors, as well as the opportunity to be published in one of their media partners. For us, that would be the Rutland Herald. The two pieces here that are, that were published in the Herald, who is Medusa and Flamingo, it's just two of the pieces that have been published this year, but both of those authors, you know, met with their peers to kind of discuss, how could they have more precise language to pull their readers in, as well as meeting with me to kind of go over and see, does this flow? Does it have a good rhythm? Because they're working with the idea that they're going to have something published, and they know that they want to have their best work possible. So that idea of revision and editing, which is not always what fifth and sixth graders want to do, I've done it, is complete. But the idea of having it published or the opportunity to have it published really motivates them to extend themselves and look for that more precise language. How could I use more sensory details? And both of those, these writers are ones who do enjoy writing, but they still engage in that process because they know it is gonna give them that opportunity to, you know, reach more people. The other one, one of the things that we also do is Young Writers USA, which is, stems from something in Great Britain. They have young writers, but they have a US-based one as well. And there's, one of the things that my students most enjoy is the 100-word sagas. And the challenge with 100-word sagas, they still have to be able to tell a story from beginning, middle, and end in just 100 words. And that really lends itself to revision and editing because they have to be really precise, and it has to be cohesive. The two pieces that I chose up here are not necessarily the strongest pieces that I submitted for this contest, but they are from two students who generally, when they are asked to write or respond to something, only give me maybe one or two sentences. Both of those students met with me at least multiple times, and I know they engaged with their peers as well, to revise it, to add more details, strengthening it through adding a dialogue or making sure that it had a realistic sequence so that it flowed, so that they could be chosen. And both of those students were selected for submission. It gets put into a little booklet that gets, not booklet, it's a little, like a soft-covered book. And so I get a complimentary copy, and then the students can purchase one, but they don't have to be to be published. And not everybody, and sometimes people think, ah, everybody who's simplistic is... I've had students who have not had their pieces included, or who've been asked to revise something if they would like it to be included. But it's always good to bolster their confidence as a writer, and so engaging through this authentic audience beyond our classroom is a way for, to help them build that. One of the other things that's really important for us beyond engaging in editing and revising is that authentic audience also helps in certain instances with our group in clarity of communication, which is really important, especially as they move on to their transferable skills in the middle school and the high school. And so one of the things that our class combined with the fifth-grade math teacher is we've had the students working on a survey project where they generated their own statistical question, and one of the things they had to do as part of that was to gather data. And in gathering the data, they had to come up with their, devise a plan for how they were going to get that information. And they had to reach out to the teachers if they wanted to go and poll either of students in other classrooms, or even if they were going to poll their peers within my class, they still had to send an email. And within that, they had to be clear with what their purpose was and how they would like to, with whom they would like... like to, with whom they would like to speak, and how long, and request the time. So they had to be very detailed in that piece. So that is from a student who normally might just ask me, Ms. McDonald, can I go do this? And they had to spell it out, and they had to revise that piece, but they also had to be really clear and succinct. One of the other ways that we are working on giving our clarity of communication is being able to give feedback to our peers, and specifically within the presentation process. And on the side, these are some examples of just some of the feedback they're giving their peers, which normally when we give a presentation, oh, that was really good. I really liked what you did. You did an excellent job. But it's not really constructive, and it doesn't help them out. So they're really working for that depth when they're giving their feedback. So like, it was very informational, you had good details. Your font was easy to read on the background. You had a good voice level and a good pace for reading. They were, when they were trying to give what we, from some of the work that we did, we had one thing that was, instead of saying, you know, what is a challenge, but what's a tip? What's a tip that you can do? And it makes it a little bit more acceptable. We really work on taking constructive feedback, because we talk about how adults are always really good at getting constructive feedback. But they're trying to couch it in a way where somebody can hear what is being said and take that and be able to use it in their next presentation. And much of what they did during their first kind of trial ones, where we did something on constellations and science, they used when they did a larger presentation on planets and other aspects of the solar system. So it's really, it's really good to hear them. Like, if I model something and then hear them take it later on and really expand upon it.
So that's our little team presentation of like a K-2 team and what they're working on with the L-NIC and the literacy, and then how they're expanding upon it with authentic audience concept in third through sixth grade. This is my first year at Shrewsbury as the principal, and it's been an absolute joy to get to know the teaching staff a little bit better and in a completely new way. I know some of them because my own children graduated from Shrewsbury Mountain School, but I'm absolutely thrilled with the learning and the joy that's happening in classrooms daily. One of the things that I think sets Shrewsbury Mountain School apart is that we do a lot of multi-age activities and events. So our students all sit in multi-age lunch tables where they get to have conversations with students that are six, all the way up to students that are 12. We also do a lot of collaborating. We have a school-wide assembly once a month where all of the students, pre-K all the way to sixth grade, meet together. We established like our school expectations, sort of be safe, be kind, and be your best in our first one, and then we had a fire safety school-wide assembly. And now we're looking forward to having a presentation that's sponsored by the Shrewsbury Conservation Commission coming up. And it's really wonderful to see our more mature fifth and sixth grade students all the way down, just mentoring and stepping alongside students that are younger and just mentoring them, and just, it's a learning environment that's positive. And one of the things that's just started as well is our book buddies. So one of the first time the fifth and sixth graders got to work with our three and four-year-olds is we planted some trees out on our campus, and it was incredible to watch their patience and really making three and four-year-olds hold the tree roots and really place them in the ground. And I think it was a great scaffolded moment and step to make them successful with their book buddies as well. So it's been an absolute joy to be here, up here on the mountain, and thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to present.
Thank you very much for presenting.
I really appreciate it, and I, because we've been going, we've been hearing from like the, it was nice to see the chart of where the kids were in kindergarten, because we've been hearing from kindergarten, first grade about these goals that have been set and how they are tough, and it's nice to see that there is progress. And the other thing that I really liked was, was talking about revisioning, like revising and stuff, because I know in my world, I do a lot of grant writing and stuff like that, where you have 500 words, and I end up writing like 1,000 or 1,500 and then come back down to that level. And I feel like a lot of people that I know who try to write, just starting to write it so hard, because you think you have to have it right the first time. So it's great to hear that, that's starting at such a younger age.
I think you can see we have some phenomenal educators here, and they, they know where their students are struggling, and they're trying things to support them, and they're seeing growth, which is awesome. So great to hear from all of you about what you're doing in your classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We know you have a lot to do. We will not watch if you sneak out, so go home. Go home. Thank you.
Don't sneak out, just leave.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the B3 complaint. So Bruce, this will be your time if you would like, Bruce, the B3 complaint now. So if you would like to respond, and then we can discuss. Okay.
My three things.
Your three things now.
As soon as you want. Hi. I said three things to say. I could be wrong. I believe the entire complaint that was read two weeks ago should have been read. It wasn't read. I should, the entire complaint should have been read in public comment. And when the minutes were posted online, it was missing pages two, three, and four. Tonight's agenda should have clearly stated what we're going to talk about. B3 complaint, just doesn't quite get it. So my concern is the fact that these things were not done may or may not have violated the open meeting law, because people don't know what's actually going on. That's all I have to say. Oh, other thing I'd say is, this meeting took place two weeks ago. I was notified by email yesterday at 4:14. I was given the packet. And by the time I checked the mail, it was like 7:00, 8:00 o'clock. Because I'd already checked it twice before. I check it two, three times a day. So when I checked it last, it was like 7:30, 8:00 o'clock. So that's when I got the packet. I'm just saying.
I see no problem with giving more time and discussing it at our next meeting, if that's what you're asking for, Bruce, to have a chance to...
I'm just putting that out there. That's for you to decide.
Is anybody, I was gonna say, Len's got wheels turning, so...
All the time. Sometimes they're just spinning. If we're going to table this for another week, or another, well, the next meeting is February 1st.
Yep.
Okay, and I'm okay with that?
We have.
And, and you may want to put on the agenda at that point, and I can't tell, well, it does call for action tonight. It says discussion, action. So I'm gonna be a bit of a historian here, because I think it's important that this This complaint was brought to the board previously, particularly around the residency. And at that time, the board chair and the board agreed that it wasn't the board's responsibility to prove or disprove residency. I don't think that falls under any of the jobs of the board. The other thing that I think is important, one of the things that's mentioned a couple of times by Ken, was about when Mr. Morton said he preferred that the board break the law by not filling the vacancy. At that meeting, and not a lot of folks were at that meeting that are here today, and that's why I feel it's important to give a little background. Several people spoke, myself included. It was at that meeting that we were trying to decide, should we, because I can speak personally, Clarence and Select Board had sent me an email saying that they felt it was their job to fill the position. Our superintendent at the time...
Len, can I throw one thing in?
Yep.
He's talking about when George Ambrose resigned, and we were trying to fill that spot, correct?
Correct.
This is when I talked about the cops dragging us out in chains.
Say that again.
That's when I talked about the cops dragging us out in chains. I remember this.
Yes.
I know where you're going with this now.
Well, and Andrea, this was around...
I fully listened to all of it.
Yeah. And, and I made some comment, actually, I ended up abstaining originally from the vote because I said, the reason I was going to abstain was because I felt it was the Select Board's decision to make, and it was not our decision. And again, I do this because not a lot of people are going to remember this. But on April 9, 2021, district administrators submitted a formal complaint of violation of Board Policy B3, Board Conflict of Interest, that was submitted by the Mill River Unified Union School District administrators and superintendent. And they said, "Our board discussed in a public session and on the record the concept of breaking the law with an apparent lack of regard for the tangible and intangible ramifications of such an action. This situation brings significant attention to the official actions of the board. Previous and current district employees have expressed to us their shame and concern about this situation. We share that shame and concern as the situation calls into question potential future actions of the board, including the acts of budgeting, policymaking, hiring, and evaluating of employee performance, to name but a few. We request that the steps outlined in Policy B3 be implemented in order for the board to address this complaint. We believe that the events that transpired affect the real and perceived integrity of the district and its operations significantly." That was the meeting that Mr. Morton said, talked about breaking the law. That was the meeting that Matt said, what are they gonna do, take us out and change? I made some comment as well. I don't recall it. My point is, this complaint was dropped by the administration.
Yes.
It was never pursued. If it was so egregious that they were concerned about all of this stuff happening, and when you look at Bruce's comment, and Matt's comment, and my comment, and then they drop it, they dropped the complaint, with no explanation, by the way. And again, I'm sorry, I remember things. And I asked why and got no response and received no response. So this was filed against the entire board, and the administration decided to drop it. So the complaint about Mr. Morton and his statement, to me, holds no grounds, because it was dealt with. And it was dropped. And while I can't talk about conversations in executive session, I have consistently raised questions as to why such a terrible misstep on the part of the board was just So that's one thing that I think is important. And again, I, everyone may not be aware of what took place, because it wasn't just what Bruce said, it was a complaint filed against the entire board.
That is not the board now.
No.
Because there's a lot of you who...
But my point is, it was filed against the entire board, and then it was dropped.
Can I throw something in?
Absolutely.
To just bring us back to the policy. Where we are right now, following our B3 Board Member Conflict of Interest policy, at the request of remaining board members or upon order of the chair, the board will hold an informal hearing. So at this point, a complaint has been brought. We're discussing that complaint.
Yep.
There is, there is a provision in the policy here for what the board can do with that, but then I think there's also an unwritten provision there that if nobody calls for that, then, you know, the complaint doesn't go any further. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So following our board policy strictly, we would need the remaining board members or the board chair to order or request an informal hearing to give both parties opportunities to discuss. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So just, just in that context of, yeah, there's a complaint, but then sometimes the complaint doesn't go anywhere, what does our policy say about that?
Yep.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
I know you probably have more to say.
I do, but I'll wait. Don't go.
So quickly to Bruce, Ken did read page one of that two weeks ago. Appreciate the history lesson. Wasn't there for all of it, but I did watch a bunch of it. So when I read this over the last week, I've read it three, four times. I've watched a whole bunch of the videos. I come back to page one of Ken's ask, please accept this letter, formal complaint against Bruce, provisions of B3. Board members will be familiar with VSBI codes. I've read it two or three times. Board members will take, not take action intended to give the impression that he or she represents special interest groups. I didn't see that. Board member will do nothing to intend to leave an impression that he or she's position on any issue be influenced by anything other than fair representation, fair presentation of both sides of a question. And then he asks us to review the packet based on those asks. It doesn't say, please review these for residency. Again, residency aside, I did go through and dig into residency, and there was a Wallingford Board Civil Authority meeting on March 3, and they have it still open for review, and they will be following Procedure T172150, and they will be following that statute, at which time the voter will be either added or removed from the talent. I got nothing.
I don't either, and I just felt it was important that folks understood what transpired at that meeting. I mean, it was a difficult meeting.
I watched it. I was there.
I watched it.
It was not fun.
No, it was not. And, and I think we were operating within the best, to our knowledge, and what we had to work on. And so, I'll stop.
I think, like, I, you know, again, same thing as Nick. I wasn't here. I've watched the videos, I've done this stuff. I can't, you know, say either way about anything really about this particular thing. The real question is, and I don't know how to determine it, it's really, is Bruce's decision of residency. If you don't live in the town that you represent, I don't know how you can do it. But I don't think it's our play, I can't...
But that is also not up to us.
I can't determine whether or not he's living there or not. I can see the videos, and I went back and I watched a bunch of videos, and you're clearly in the same place for those videos. And so I, but that, I can't make anything based off of it. But, you know, it's like, I can't, I don't know. It's the towns to decide whether or not you're a resident, I think, right?
So this is my perspective on, and as being subject of one of the meetings, the town would be responsible to inform us, or we could inquire with the town if that is the case of residency. The other issue I have with this is this complaint has, yes, been for, it's been on and off discussed for a while. If you... If you look at the board now, there is literally one, two, three, four board members that were originally on this board. Nick and Josh, and probably Paul, would not feel comfortable enough doing any sort of vote. We don't even have the same superintendent. I would not be involved in any of it, because I was subject to that discussion with the town of Clarendon, and have always had a target on my back since the beginning of that. So, I have a real issue with what is still going on. I would think that any board member on this board or on any future boards that Mill River may have would have the decency to come to us and say, "Hey, by the way, my house burned down, I have to go stay in Clarendon for a little bit." Or, "My house burned down, I have to go stay with family in Killington. It may take me a while to get my insurance to go through, to rebuild." Then it can be discussed. The town would also be able to come to us and say, if we asked to not just come, and I'm sure that's not on their Select Board Meetings' agenda every meeting, to inform school boards if they have a member that moves out, that, that would be, that somebody may not be residing there. So, yes, I believe that is not in the board description to go on who lives in a residence or who doesn't, who lives in the district, who doesn't live in the district. I would just think that any board member would have the decency to come to us to say something to us. If you still pay taxes in the town, you may have to reside with a family member because you're sick or something, but you still want to come to the board meetings. There's understanding in all different situations. So, that being said with that, I don't... That being said with that, the other part of the complaint, you give me a real problem to make any sort of decision or any move on, because you do not have, you have a very new board, you have a new superintendent, there's a new Chair, there are new, new members, there is also a member that will renig on everything, or abstain from everything, because they were subject to most of the, the subject of some of it. And we're happily sitting on that three and a half hour meeting to make, see if they got voted in to be a future board member. So, I have a problem with that, too. I would not make any motion to go further in a hearing, based on everything I have heard, every discussion I have had, and in my own thoughts.
So, at the request of the remaining board members or upon order of the Chair, the board will hold an informal hearing. Without the, either of those provisions, then, and I'm just quoting from policy.
Yep.
If there's a hearing, there's more to the policy about how that plays out.
Probably should do a roll call vote.
We can do...
Well, we don't, someone's got to make a motion.
No.
Yeah, there has to be...
I thought we had to take action.
No.
There has to be a motion.
Well, we can take action by not taking any action.
Do I have a motion for a roll call?
There's nothing to vote on.
There's nothing?
It says, as Brian has said...
Do you want to do a roll call anyway?
No.
It would be on nothing.
No, it, it, it says, number one, "At the request of the remaining board members..." That's us. "...or the Chair, or upon order of the Chair, the board will hold an informal hearing on the conflict of interest claim. If, if there's no order of the Chair or request by the remaining board members, end of story."
So, I...
So, we move on to...
To figure out what everybody wants.
Safety update.
To appease the messes, I abstain from going any further on that topic.
No, and that's, that's fine, we don't need to...
No.
So, this will be done and over with. But I'm looking to my board.
There's no requests.
Okay, well, I know there's no requests. Okay.
Let's follow the policy.
All right, then, on to the next item. Thank you very much, Ken. We have, you, safety update?
Yep, and actually, Jody, you want to jump in and explain that?
I was going to say, Jody is here.
Yep.
So, I don't know if you all remember...
Will it be covering what you just sent us today?
Yes.
Yes.
I didn't read it yet.
Yeah, um, so...
You don't have to have read it, don't worry.
You don't have to have read it. When we were together in Tinmouth at the very beginning of the year, and then again at Mill River, in the meeting where Joe came along to talk about what he does as our school safety officer, we were discussing all of the pieces of school safety that we're really working on shoring up this year. I wanted to start by telling you things that we've done since then, which is that Amy and I worked together to figure out local funding from our combined nurse and CO budget to create emergency go-bags for every single classroom, with tourniquets and whistles, pennies, all different things that we thought would be needed in that. That's pretty standard for most districts, but we just hadn't had it done yet. So, we'll be going over what's in the go-bags at our January release day and handing them out to teachers. The teachers of the younger kids asked for some sort of a book or material that they could go over, drills with kids, in a way that would feel developmentally appropriate and not too scary. So, I reached out to Brooke Olson Farrell, who's a local superintendent who's considered a, you know, expert in school safety, she recommended a picture book, and so, we did purchase that for pre-K, K1 and 2, we'll be handing that out as well. And in the drill information that's coming down from the state, the State Agency of Education is saying that we really should start doing options-based drills, as well as traditional lockdown drills. We wanted to do that really carefully, in a developmentally appropriate and trauma-informed way, so, we have been reading through the documentation on how to do trauma-informed options-based drills, and have a handbook for teachers that we'll be going over at the next leadership team meeting, that then we'll be training teachers on. So, we're going to switch over from just lockdown to doing options-based in the spring. That does not mean we're going to actually practice running into the woods or throwing things at people, it means we're going to do tabletop exercises, when, in a developmentally appropriate way, so if we're talking to elementary kids, we might say, "Hey, if there's a moose on the playground of Shrewsbury Mountain School, and we're all in the, in the playground, what would we do next?" And then having that classroom-based discussion about what the options are, according to research, has been shown to be, you know, as effective at helping kids' brains figure out safe choices without traumatizing them. So, those are all the things we're working on, but you guys did ask me about an external safety assessment, so I did reach out to Margolis Healy, who works with a lot of districts in Vermont, they're kind of the company that is doing this work in New England, they came back to me with a quote, and so, I am presenting it to you. It is $34,320. So, just giving you what you'd asked for, I'm happy to share my opinion if you wanted, if not, I'll just sit back down and let you discuss.
Because we had that conversation around, what would it take to bring, you know, outside experts in to do the work, so we wanted to bring it to you, just to show that we're following up on...
Is that for all five?
Yep.
It is for all five, but that's the assessment, it's not, um...
Any follow-through?
How long is that estimate good for? Or is that a thingy good for?
It will be good until we have fixed those problems. I do want to say that if, you know, if somebody comes in and recommends $200,000 worth of safety technology, and we have the recommendation, and then something happens, that, you know, liability.
Catch 22, right?
Yeah, we want to know, we want to do better. We also want to make sure we're spending money appropriately.
So, what would that $34,000 include?
Yeah, so, I emailed you the full packet that they sent over to me, which has a full schedule for what they would do, with the outcomes they'd provide to us, and the, the value-added pieces of that.
It was just this afternoon, it was like 14 pages.
Yeah, it's 14 pages.
So, it's literally...
I mean, I've seen some schools that put in fogging machines in the halls, so you can't see the shooter, you can't see, you know, they, they, some of them are extreme.
Can get expensive fast, too.
I wouldn't expect that, Rob Evans is the head of this organization, he is very knowledgeable about small rural schools, I wouldn't expect something like that from him, but, but it is, it is an expensive proposal.
And I think worth noting, this is not in the budget anywhere.
I was just, that would be an expression, is this, is this the budget, okay?
Yeah, so, this was an ask, we wanted to bring it to you, it's something, I think, to keep in the back of our heads, I don't know that the board's going to want to take any action tonight, I don't know that you can, because it's an unbudgeted expense, so we'd have to do a little more work, we just kind of want a little bit of a, you know, shake your heads yeah, shake your heads no, do you want us to keep exploring if we can do this or not? Or do you want us to start looking for some alternate options?
Or do you want more time to read it, and then we can come back?
Yeah.
Just kind of, just to kind of hit it on the surface.
Yep.
In my opinion, it's, it's really unfortunate, but this is the direction, I think, that we need to go eventually, inevitably. I'm not saying maybe this is the best company, we should, obviously, we should read the proposal and look at it, but I think we can only stick our head in the sand for so long. I mean, we have to be realistic about all this stuff.
I like what Matt says, but to Andrea's point, is this quotation valid for 30 days, 60 days, 120 days, like, what kind of timeframe are we?
Right.
We come back to them in, like, great, we get the budget approved, and then all of a sudden, in April, we go, "Hey, we found this 30 grand."
And it's 2,000, 200,000 now.
I wouldn't anticipate that that would happen, there, there is a specific timeframe, he has checked in with me to say, "Hey, let me know the board's feedback after you present it," because he, he sent it, said, "What's your next step?" I said, "I'm presenting this to the board who requested it." He said, "All right, let me know." So, I could all, I could always say, "Board is not ready to take action at this time, but wants to know if this quote would be extended through the next fiscal year if they chose to take action."
And it's all labor, right? So, it's like, it's going to be like, maybe like a certain percentage increase that would happen like over the next year, right? So, it's like...
Right, CPI is running 6% at the moment, so...
Right, going down, so maybe it'll be, you know, well, it'll go down.
So, I would, who has not had a chance to look at this?
I haven't looked at it, so...
And, and we're not in a rush, we're not.
No, we're not.
You know, we need to see if the budget is approved on Town Meeting Day number one, then, if you did want to do something, we would have to find $35,000, which I think is, is going to be hard.
Two things, if I can, I'm sorry.
You go first.
I think the training in the options is very much worthwhile. I know schools that have been doing it for several years, and it, it does provide flexibility, that in terms of, if you have someone in the gym, and my classroom is on the other side of the building, I'm out the door, and gone.
Don't go running towards the gym.
So, those kinds of options are good to look at, and I, and I'm talking to high school level, I, I, you know, that's my experience, so, so I think that's, that's something that's worth continuing to investigate and work on. The other thing is, and Brooke over in Fairhaven has a ton of experience in school safety, and I think you can use that experience as helpful. I also know, in the past, that we used Vermont State Police or the local sheriff's office to conduct tabletop exercises, to come into the school and, and set up scenarios and that kind of thing. So, and we didn't have to pay them, which was kind of nice, so, I think that's something that maybe we could investigate, whether it's the state police or the sheriff's office, you know, set up a scenario, and also come in and look at how we do things, and I think if you can do that locally, because the reality is, if something happens, these guys ain't going to help us, you know, and, and I know that's a little hard, but, but that's true. Who's going to help you is the local law enforcement folks.
So, can I just answer to a couple of those? Absolutely, Brooke's an amazing free resource, and she donates time so willingly to any question that any district has, but we're lucky to have a good connection with her and use it. At the beginning of the year, we did do a safety walkthrough of every single one of our buildings with Joe and Amy, and myself, and the building principal, and invited emergency management directors, and sometimes they weren't able to make it, but then they would do a walkthrough with the principals, and so, we were able to do that. In August, the Town of Rutland Emergency Management offered a tabletop exercise, where PD from all different towns came along with school admin, and people from the hospital, and we all sat down and did it together, and that was free, and that was so worthwhile. We are also really lucky that the state contracts with Margolis Healy, and so, Brian and I are always looking for the ways where the state's already paid for something, that we can take advantage of it for free. So, for example, next week, I'm going to a free two-day training on how to be a train the trainer to do threat assessments, which is when you talk to a kiddo to try to figure out if they're a threat, so that I can train our staff, so we don't have to pay for a trainer. And that was totally free through the same company, but paid for by the state. So, we're, you know, we're looking for the...
And I know you are, I, I know you are, and that's, that, you know, nothing I said was, was...
Oh, no.
As a criticism, it's just, I, I think there's ways you can do it that won't cost you $30,000.
And I just want you to know, I agree with you.
Yeah, okay.
One more thing, is there any possibility that there could be a state or federal grant that could help with something like this?
Great question, so, Margolis Healy has others, other districts have used SRF funds, we already have all of our SRF funds kind of aligned. Some districts can use Title IV for safety, and have used Title IV, and that's those consolidated federal grants we get every year.
Yep.
We don't get enough Title IV, so, we get like, maybe a seventh of what Fairhaven does for Title IV, because of our free and reduced lunch numbers.
We, we might get around 30,000, but then the trick with Title IV is, you have to spend 20% on a certain type of investment, then 15% on a certain type, and then technology is a little slice, so, we could barely have enough, but the state wouldn't let us use it, we'd have to have like 100,000 of that to be able to use the 34.
Now, I will say, at the Governor's Safety Conference, there were different companies set up, and federal agencies set up around the conference, and some of those companies were talking about different federal grants they're working on, and so, this is something that I had conversations there about, like, "Hey, we really need this," and other things, "Here's, you know, my contact information, if you get a federal grant that you think is going to work for this, please let us know, because I will gladly write 50 pages on that." So, none of those have panned out yet, but I, I'm trying to work that angle, too.
Right, because we don't, not, not only do we need a grant for that, but then implementation of the recommendations is like a whole nother level of it, so...
Are folks comfortable with us putting this on the agenda to pick back up after the budget passes?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or we want to, okay?
Thank you, Jody, for doing that.
Very important.
Next is school choice numbers.
So, this is something we do every year, and the way school choice numbers work, we're talking about the High School Choice Program, which means parents can apply, caregivers can apply for their, their children to go to another high school, so long as they can provide transportation, and so long as they're approved, they can do that, so Rutland High might have some of our resident students, we may have some of Rutland's resident students at Mill River. We set numbers for how many students can go out from Mill River to another high school, and for how many students can come in to our high school. The interesting thing about this is, school choice... this is school choice happens in a way that doesn't affect our budget. So it's not that we lose 20 students to other high schools and then we lose that funding. We actually still claim those students as ours. So the idea is that while Rutland has a few of ours, we have a few of Rutland's. If we all set reasonable numbers, we can have that flexibility and we can offer some choice for high school. So historically, we had set numbers that are about 40 students coming in and about 24 students going out. That's what we approved last year. Those are numbers that seem to be working reasonably for us. If you think about 40 students in the high school, that's a number that doesn't necessarily mean, oh no, we need to hire some new teachers. That's a number that we can generally take care of. We don't tend to have 40 coming in. 24 out. I think part of that may be that we don't want to have too many students leaving to the point that we just don't have enough students to run certain programs or things like that. If you think about athletics, you know, when you have fewer students, Kim has shown us a couple of times that 30% of our population participates, but if that population shrinks, 30% is a smaller number. So I think being mindful of not having too many students out helps us to have better programs, if that makes sense, even though that doesn't change revenue. It could affect program. I'd recommend that we approve the same numbers that we approved last year, and I believe last year we checked and we said, whoa, those were the numbers we did the year before. So my recommendation is 40 students allowed to come in on school choice and 24 allowed to go out for school choice. If somebody wanted to make that motion.
I make a motion for what Brian said. For 40...
40 in.
40 students in and 24 out.
Up to.
Up to for student choice. Len seconds.
Oh, sure. You can drop the second.
And all in favor?
Discussion.
Oh, wait, we have a discussion?
Do you know how many kids are choicing out when in?
Off the top of my head, I do not know that. I can find that for the next meeting. I think it tends to be around half of those numbers. We have not gotten close to those limits in the past.
I got one question. I may have asked this before a year ago. I don't know. Say we have 40 students coming in. Do we have any sort of requirements on like discipline? Are we accepting discipline problems from others, too?
So school choice, we have an application process, and the students would be applying. I think the deadline's in March, sometime there, for the next school year. It's basically a first-come, first-served kind of process. When we, in the past, when we've had this conversation, we talk about non-resident tuition students. Non-resident tuition students, we have a policy, and we do make sure that they are in good standing before we accept those students. So in those scenarios, we can reach out to the sending school and ask for grades, discipline data, things like that. And that would be something I would bring to the board to approve a non-resident tuition student. School choice is a little more flexible, and I think the goal behind choice is to allow students and families to make decisions. So we don't, you know, I think it's fair to say that we honor that choice because we want families to be able to have that choice. You know, we're not saying school choice is not an option for folks who don't have good grades. I think that's not...
I would never say not good grades. I would never say students with disabilities. But if you have a student who's constantly being suspended, fighting, and those kinds of things, we accept him.
I think we tend not to have as many of those cases because it's not a student deciding on Tuesday, hey, I want to go to a different school. It's a student going through an application process. And I think just by the nature of those timelines, you know, if you have a student who's getting in a lot of trouble in the fall, they're probably not going to apply for school choice for the next year because then they've got to go through the whole spring. You know, I think school choice doesn't really, I don't think it's as attractive to those students. If those students are struggling that much in the fall, they might get expelled. And we have had, but we have had scenarios in the past where folks have said, hey, I got expelled. Can I apply? Under statute, the district that has expelled you is responsible for your education. You know, so I hear what you're saying, Bruce, but I think the spirit of choice is that families have access to options for their students and...
I'm all for it, but being in the classroom for 40 years, I can also tell you, a lot of discipline problems have come in over the years, and that disrupts the entire learning process.
But those discipline problems may also change if they actually go through all the waiting thing and get to a new school. So we have to look at that option, too.
I think that...
In the wait period, yes, you're waiting.
Yeah, I think the timeline does make it a little less likely that students jump around schools as much for school choice. But, you know, on the other hand, too, we have students who leave our district to go to Rutland, and Rutland might tell us, yeah, sometimes we get some from your district that our challenge is for us. And I think, you know, the dollars don't shift. So I think part of the theory behind school choice is if we're, if everybody has flexibility, everybody's going to pitch in and take care of these kids. Does that make sense? So no, that is different from the non-resident tuition cases. It is different. Good question.
So all in favor? Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now bus bids.
Okay.
Wait, no!
Skip Stafford.
We skipped, sorry. Stafford representative appointed. So with Adrian's resignation, we have to appoint a representative to go to Stafford and represent us and our board. Sorry, it's late. And in much discussion, I would like to make a motion to appoint Nick with Josh as a backup for our Stafford representative. Josh would, yes. Any discussion on it? Josh would be back up when Nick can't be there.
Have they agreed to this?
Yeah, sorry. There has been a discussion prior.
You didn't take him in the back room?
No, I didn't. No, sorry.
And then at the meeting when we were in Wallingford, I just, they were talking, and I said, oh, well, you know, if you can't do it, I would be fine to do it as well. So I'm glad for Nick to be the primary.
If and I ever can't make it, I will say, hey, Josh, can you make this meeting?
And Nick is an alumni from Stafford.
Yeah, so it works out.
So it works perfect. And yes, sorry, there has been a discussion prior.
They just told me.
Yeah.
It's a shock for me.
So Len, did I have a second?
Yes, I did, for the purposes of discussion.
All in favor? Sorry. All right, that was unanimous. So congratulations. I will find out details.
I'll email Melissa Connor so she knows.
Yep. So when your next meeting is...
Not till maybe March, actually, later on.
I think I heard that.
Now bus bids, sorry.
Bus bids. Hot off the presses. I got this this morning. We were hoping all of this was going to come through, and there's an interesting recommendation here. So I sat down with Tim and Nicole, and we talked about this a lot this morning. We had been exploring options, and timing was becoming a challenge because we were being told by all these vendors that you're going to have to wait six months to a year to get a bus. Nicole did hear from, you'll see the last bid on here, WC Creasy and Sons, they have a used bus. It is a bus that was under lease for three years, and you'll see the cost of that bus is a fair bit below the cost of a new bus. Even the lowest new bus on here, 106.9, so it's about 25,000 or, sorry, about 30,000 less than that new bus. This would include camera systems and some other things that we need on there, and it does have a warranty through 8-124. So talking with Nicole, and, oh, sorry, the most important part of this is estimated delivery date is immediately.
Oh, sweet.
Well, we are in a scenario where we've been talking about being behind schedule on our bus replacement. Anyway, while this is a used bus, it would get us closer to being back on schedule, and the conversation we had was there's another bus in the budget next year. We can turn around and order a new bus really quickly, and then we can be okay waiting to get that new bus. So this would be a little bit of a stopgap. So gosh, if we could go back in time two years and order a new bus and get it now, wouldn't that be nice? That would get us closer to where we need to be. Well, now we'd have a three-year-old bus, and we'd have it now.
And our normal amortization here is 10 years.
Yes, that's what we've used in the past.
Do we really need a 71-passenger bus again?
I think...
Are we replacing one that's going to the graveyard, or?
Yes, we have one that has been racking up some costs. I think we had, you know, we had all totaled, if you take a bus and you add this bill and this bill and this bill as we did some maintenance, yeah, maybe about 20,000. So we're getting to the point where maintaining some of our older buses is starting to rack up dollars. So their recommendation is to accept the bid for the used bus.
And this, because this bus was, the first year probably didn't see very much use, right?
Sure. COVID timing, it was likely not.
So it's like, it's not, it's a less-used bus than what normally would have happened.
Is a used bus.
And they feel very confident, looking at that warranty, that if there are any issues that we would know that by 8-124, that, you know, we've got almost, we've got a whole year, maybe longer, if we start using the bus this year.
Do we know how many miles are on the bus?
I don't know. I don't know that. That seems important.
What do you do with the bus we have? Do they take a trade-in? Do you get rid of it? Do you trash it?
We get rid of a bus, yeah. We find whatever way. Great question. I don't know.
Yeah, what happens to the buses in the graveyard?
People can't find them.
We have a handful of them that are just parked.
That I don't know.
So we're looking to do a bid for two buses. We're looking to buy one that's used.
Well, right now, the recommendation is let's accept the bid for the 73-753, and then if everything goes well, budget passes, we have a bus in next year's budget, and we would move on that quickly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, my question is, is that when we had these companies give us these bids, were these bid prices based on the fact that they thought they were getting two buses from us? If we turn around and say we're only going to buy one bus, is the price higher now?
I do not believe that's the case.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
I do not believe that's the case, yep.
Well, technically, they might be getting two buses from us. We just aren't approving another bus until next year.
And, you know...
You know what I mean?
Yeah, but it could be with the other company, the second bus could be with a different company because, you know, WC Creasy and Sons, who has the used bus, their price is, you know, $20,000 more than some of the other companies for new buses. You got one here for, you know, 106 versus 120. So I'm just saying, I just want to make sure they're going to honor that price as a per-bus price and not thinking they're getting two buses.
Yep. I believe so, from the conversations we were having.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure.
No, good question. Good question.
Is Lion Electric an electric bus?
Yes.
That's why it's almost $400,000.
And I think that's an interesting thing to see, just to know that. The cost of that is pretty high.
That is ridiculous.
Yep.
Even the camera system's twice the price.
So, okay, back to my question of do we really need a 71-passenger bus? Is there any...
I think, I think the price differential, when you look at the bus, it wouldn't save us a lot of money to buy a smaller bus.
To buy like two small ones for a route?
Well, I think the challenge is if you've got two small buses, now you need two drivers. And there are times where we definitely need the bus at capacity to field trips, especially.
Field trips, sports.
That comes back to the conversation we were having earlier about putting out consolidated versus not consolidated.
If we consolidate, we're going to want a bigger bus. So that's, it is a good question and good point. We've had shorter buses in the past, and we just don't really use them.
Okay, that works.
And we have, how many vans do we have?
We have two vans.
Two vans, okay.
So when we do have a scenario of five students, you know, we're going to use a van. Good questions.
I make a motion to buy the used bus.
And that...
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor? All right, we're good.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Before we move on, is it possible to find out what we do with the...
I will ask.
Old buses.
We'll find out if there's a graveyard, because if we could donate it.
Donate or sell. I've had one or two people say, hey, if you have an unused bus, I'd be happy to purchase it.
Yeah, I'll ask.
And I'd like to know how many miles. Okay, on to committee meeting, personnel.
Yep.
Did you have a meeting?
No, but we'll have one scheduled for February 1st.
Yes. Do you want to talk a little bit about the meeting we had about my eval stuff? Just briefly?
Oh, yeah, good point. Let me just say, the personnel, next personnel meeting is scheduled for February 1st at 5:30.
6?
That, too. Yeah, 6.
At 6, Pam.
And thank you, Brian. Matt and Andrea and I met with Brian last week.
Thursday.
Thursday, and went over the superintendent evaluation tool. And Brian took the opportunity to talk with us about his goals and the things that he was looking at working on this year. And Andrea and Matt, you can jump in anytime, and Brian, you can, too. And so I feel pretty confident that we have an idea moving forward of how we can focus in on what Brian feels are his goals off of that evaluation. In other words, not just sending out the evaluation and having people check something out, which I don't think works very well.
And the thing I'd add is, you know, I have my goals because I was hired, and we have work to do, and I want to move on that work, but I really want to hear feedback around what do my goals need to be next year?
Right.
What is not working? What are my blind spots? How can I do a better job?
And I think the next step for the Personnel Committee is, we're not going to do the evaluations until the spring because, just given the timeframe, that would work best. And at that point, we would, and Brian has stated that he wants input from lots of folks, and so we would, we will devise a system where we sit down with people and go over the specific goals that Brian wants to work on and develop, and we get their feedback on that. So I think we're in a much better place in terms of the superintendent's evaluation than we have been in the past.
And I appreciate the support.
Andrea, Matt, anything?
No, I don't think so.
I think you covered pretty well. I think we're in a good position. I think we're heading in the right direction, and we'll get this all together.
Yeah, and I think the second step would be, when we see how this goes this spring, we may choose to change things in the evaluation, but we're at a point right now where we're not going to have to reinvent the wheel, which we have been doing for a couple of years now, to say the least. So I'm confident moving forward, and I appreciate Brian's input. And, you know, as I say, the next steps at that meeting on the 1st, we'll talk about who do we talk to in terms of the evaluation. So thanks for reminding me, Brian. So, thanks for reminding me, Brian. That's it for me.
And next meeting is February 1st at 6:00.
Correct.
Prior to the board meeting at 7:00.
Correct.
Um, on policy, there is, next meeting for policy will be February 14th at 5:30. And we have our F-18, 18-year-old students' policy. We had actually voted unanimously to rescind this policy, as we don't feel we need it anymore. And V.S.-
VA.
VA does not have a policy like this. Um, Brian, looks like he's thinking.
Which policy was that? I missed that.
F-18.
F-18, okay. So, do we want that on our next agenda for first reading to rescind?
Um, yes, please.
Okay. Just F-18, or?
Um, yes.
You have some others?
No.
Okay.
The other two we're rolling.
Okay.
And working on. So, that's the-
Fantastic, thank you.
Um, okay, buildings and grounds?
Still not much of anything. Tim seems to be doing a great job with what he's doing. I don't want to hassle him out. I would like to get into some idea of how things are going. I got some education on to how parents can drop their kids off better at the front of the high schools than what they're doing now.
How about pickup, not drop-off? Pickup.
Well, throw over. But, yeah, anyway, that was getting interesting. And we've got a couple of spots of, of tar that need to be redone. It's probably as soon as spring comes to the point where we can work around things. But other than that, everything's fine.
I don't remember, what was, was there a timeline for when we were gonna find out about the, the whole water?
Oh, yeah. I don't know that we've heard anything back on that.
That was the stormwater runoff stuff, right?
Yeah, like, we can't do anything until we know about that.
Because we were working with the state on that. Let me ask. I will ask.
Do you have another meeting scheduled? Are you guys planning it by year, letting them?
Planning it by year. What was the water situation, Wallingford stuff?
Runoff, water runoff.
At the high school, we can't pave anything, because-
Impermeable surface.
We're not compliant.
We didn't want to do any work if we were gonna get told six months after we did it that we were in-
Right. Because right now, we are not compliant.
The spots where the, where the staff parks usually, that's gonna be an issue. It was, it was put back in and retired, and maybe some, some piping underneath that, hating one way or the other. The rest of it is, just comes in from the side of the, side of the main road coming in and keeps it going there. I'd love to see us do something different on, on the grass around the, you call it the teardrop area when you first come in. On both sides, it seems that the cars are sort of parking with two-thirds of the vehicle on the, on the lawn, and the other third, little bit of the corner of the tar. I'd like to see us do something a little differently.
It's because you have to, Doug, because we really need to discuss tra, the traffic for pickup. I sit in that line three days out of the week.
I do myself sometimes.
Len will appreciate this. If we're talking B&amp;G, and we're talking about where are things that we've talked about in the past, thank you for bringing the stormwater up, Josh. We checked on the-
Co-generator?
The bleachers, yeah. We checked on the bleachers to see if anybody wanted those for scrap, if we could get a couple of bucks. And the word on the bleachers was no. It's not even worth it. So, next on the list is the co-generator to see. I, I'm worried that, you know, where we were, you know, five years ago, where they were buying up scrap cars like they were, you know.
I thought they were still doing that.
I, well-
Not as much.
Has the price gone down?
Maybe, so-
Scrap metal's not worth very much right now.
Yeah, plus they'd have to come and disassemble a building.
So, that might sit there longer. But we'll, we'll be following up on that one. But the bleachers surprised us, because we thought that would be an easy one for somebody to grab for scrap. But they said, nope, we'll, we'll haul it if you pay us. So-
Yeah.
Just, we haven't forgotten about those.
I'm betting they'll say the same about Toby.
Yeah, too bad.
I thought you were going on Len's driving route, where they do the S thing and down south, and that's what I thought you were going on.
Sorry, sorry for getting us a little bit off track there.
Um, okay, and community engagement, Sam's not here.
Yeah, she's not feeling well.
Yeah, so do we want to, we'll just skip update till next meeting? And I'm assuming next meeting for them-
It'll be February 14th, it looks like.
February 14th at 6:30.
So, I don't think, oh, they did do a meeting on the 10th, but-
They did, it was a-
Good meeting?
I wasn't there.
Totally ran out.
Yeah, we did do, we met on the 10th.
Yeah, it was a good meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, finance. I have the pay orders.
You do?
I do. Liz's stuck. Do you want to present the pay orders?
Do you want to read them, Doug?
I will do whatever I'm asked to do.
Please present the pay orders.
I shall do that. Wait a minute. Yeah, okay, he wants to do that, too. I've got two sets of pay orders. The first one is gonna be coming from General Fund. There are one, two, yeah, two openings. First part of the General Fund comes in at $296,763.92. And Andrea, do you know what ASP means as a-
After-school program?
There you go. After-school program for the district's complete, $312.67. Lunch programs, likely at Mill River, $39,773.09. And for more General Fund, money's coming through for $11,539.20 for total, and this number's $348,388.88. Lower down, student activities for Mill River, an amount of 31, excuse me, $3,164.25. Student activity from Clarendon was at zeros. Student activity at Shrewsbury School is 116, see, what's that number there? It's just $16. Student activity at Tinmouth was at zeros, and activity at Wallingford's is $1,106 even, for a total of $4,293.25. That's on for the General Fund and some of the fundings that we do for the schools and such that are there. The second one is for payroll warrants. It's for all the employees that we pay on a regular basis. And they come to an amount of, from January 13th, by the way, of $562,683.42. And for total of everything in, that we have is $592,653.42. And I put in a motion that we approve those numbers for the district.
Second?
We have a second.
So, in the discussion, I just wanted that, um, the payroll for the 13th was the total of the $592,635.42. It was just read a little differently in each spot. So, just if anybody looks at the papers. Any other discussion on, okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. Um, next is a transact, bleh, transact other legal business. 8:30, you can't talk.
Can I throw something in?
Go right ahead.
Something that, if you're not aware of, you will likely become aware of. The legislature is working at the very last minute to change language required on the annual meeting ballot. We have set our warning. We set our language, and we used what's required in statute, which is the per pupil change, the change in expenditure per pupil, so that percentage. There is a chance that that legislate, that bill could go through, and it could happen before town meeting day, and there could be some districts that warn a ballot that has whatever language they choose to put on it. My personal opinion is that we actually don't know if that's gonna happen or not, number one. That puts us in a time crunch if it does happen to, you know, warn a different ballot. And why would we change what we're telling people if we've already told them what our budget is? So, I think from a standpoint of not, not adding to confusion of, well, I saw this, but now it says this, you know, I think it's worth being aware of. But I think it's transparent to say, we warned it. It's the budget. You know, you could slice it 10 different ways, but we're gonna stick with the way we warned it.
Yep.
So, that's just something, so you're aware of that. If you wanted to put it on agenda building and discuss it as a board and, and make action on that, that's up to you. But I, I felt like people just needed to be aware of that being in motion.
Funny, because when-
It's realistically the same budget number. It's how you put it on the ballot.
Doesn't change our budget at all. It's just how you-
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's strange, because when, when do you have to have it warned by for, before the vote?
We have that window of, what is it, Pam, the 40 days, the 10 days?
We already warned it. It was actually run Saturday.
Yeah, it's just a weird thing to legislate.
Yeah.
Knowing that you're so close to the window, anyway.
It's last minute, yeah, it is. Well-intended, well-intended, but last minute.
It's very strange.
Sorry, that's all I had.
No, that's fine. So, agenda?
I have a question. We have potential new board members, like people who want to maybe be on, do, do we want them to say anything, or?
No.
Are they just here, they're just here for-
We're doing it on the 1st.
Okay.
That would have been public comment.
I didn't, I was just double-checking.
And we're making, yeah, we're not making decisions today.
Yeah, yeah. It was just of, do we want to hear them?
And that is agenda building.
Agenda building.
Shrewsbury appointment for the 1st.
Our board meeting on the 1st is at-
Mill River.
Mill River.
Hybrid. So, Shrewsbury appointment, we have, F-18 to rescind is gonna be under policy.
Yep.
On our schedule, we have-
We have safety update.
Uh, oh, I don't think we're, like, an update from Jody again?
Uh, the proposal, if we're going to-
No, that was following-
Can we bump that further out?
After budget time.
Yeah, after the budget. On our schedule, we have special ed intervention pre-K. So, getting an update in those realms. We've been hearing a lot from schools, but hearing from those three areas. You know, that's gonna be a little longer than hearing from a school.
Um, do we have a Dean of Students update since we're done with our first semester?
We have that on the-
When is she on our-
We have that on the schedule. We have that with guidance in April.
Can we bump that since we're midsemester?
We could, what if we did that in-
Or we're right after.
In March, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we just ended.
Well, be careful in March.
Yep.
Because you're gonna have a restructure.
Oh, that's right. Can we do it the second meeting in February, then?
Uh, that's really supposed to be Tinmouth. So, that would bump, and I, you know, that's the whole guidance department. So, I want to be careful about if the guidance department has been planning on April.
Yeah.
Through, curveball and saying, oh, yeah, by the way, get your presentation ready.
Early.
I think, I think March, I think March, we could ask and see.
Yeah.
But February makes me worry that we're throwing that.
And the other thing is to think about, like, when we do, when we're talking about the schedule for when we redo next year.
Yeah.
If that's a thing that you want to say, then say-
If we want it near semester change, let's adjust that for next year.
Yeah.
Yep. No, good, good-
Well, it's a-
To bring up.
Good position. I don't think we've ever really had it.
Yep.
Lumped in with guardian, the guidance.
So, special ed intervention pre-K, rescinding F-18, first reading, Shrewsbury appointment. Do we have a need for anything else on there?
That about covers it.
Okay.
I think, yeah, I think that's it.
That's good, that's pretty good.
Fantastic.
Um, do we need an executive session?
None that I'm aware of.
All right, adjourned by consensus.